Good evening, welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for February 9th. Appreciate your coming. If we could all stand and salute the flag, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey.
Here.
Commissioner Baldini.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana.
Here.
And Mayor Coyne.
Here.
Are there any agenda changes that wish to be made?
I wish to change the agenda. I wish to change the agenda so that we recognize our boards and committees before we begin the rest of our business.
All right, you want to move items two and three up to right after announcements, then?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's fine. Any other? Commissioner Baldini. Do you need, just a point of clarification, do you need to make a motion to move an agenda item?
We do usually do a motion.
Okay, then you move, there's a support for that? Any opposition or discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Any other changes to the agenda?
Um...
Commissioner Reynolds?
With regard to the consent agenda, I would propose that we remove Dave Campana's check to be voted on separately and to allow Commissioner Frazier to abstain from the item of Pure Michigan Boat Cruises LLC, the termination of the lease agreement.
Okay, all those in favor of that, is there support to that? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Any other agenda changes? Seeing none. Motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda as stated.
As stated or as amended?
As stated.
As amended?
As amended.
Yeah, okay. Any second to that?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Announcements? Just one announcement I have, in that we are making very good progress on the boards and commissions. We still have some critical needs, one on, two openings on arts and culture, two on the Housing Commission, and four on the Planning Commission. Those are critical positions we need, and I must compliment the citizens, they've done a great job stepping up. We've really had a lot of new people volunteer, so I really appreciate that, and we're happy to have other people join us. With that, with the agenda change, if I could ask Emily Coyne and Fred Taccholini to come up to that little stand up there. Right here, Emily and Fred. On behalf of the commission and the citizens, I want to thank you both for your service. Emily, Emily and I were talking earlier this evening, and Emily's served on boards and commissions for eighteen years, so this is, thank you very much for your efforts and for your commitment and helping the city go forward. Appreciate it. And Fred, it's with deep sadness that we accept you, your resignation from the Local Development Finance Authority Board. You moved out of the city, so you cannot serve anymore, but you were very instrumental and very helpful in getting this developed and getting it started, and we greatly appreciate that. So, and we hope that you might consider in the future serving on the other committee that the Development Finance Committee would be appointing, and you don't have to be a member of the, live in the city. So, thank you very much. Would either of you have anything to say or any comments?
Just a couple of quick comments. I think some of you have heard me speak several times on the Local Development Finance Authority and the Smart Zone, and I do feel bad that due to our recent moving out of the city, that I can't serve on that particular committee any longer. But it's going extremely well so far, and we're looking forward to, I know they're looking forward to continuing to communicate with everyone on the status of that. Thank you.
Emily, I know I've listened to your talk that you've prepared extensively, over and over.[348.31][348.31](Laughter). She doesn't have a talk, do you?
Yeah, that way you don't have to listen to it again. But I have appreciated very much the opportunity to serve on these boards. I think I've learned a lot, and I have met some wonderful people, and it's been a positive experience all around, so I really encourage everyone else to try their hand at it.
Thank you. Thanks to you both. Thank you very much.[380.12][380.12](Applause). The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Justin Vassal on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Justin, thank you for coming tonight.
Just like to take a minute, just touch base on a couple things. When I was, started off as an alternate and moved to a regular member, and I was a vice chairman, now I'm chairman of the zoning board of appeals. I enjoy serving at the pleasure of the citizens for the city of Marquette, and per the chairman's responsibilities, you give a presentation to the city commission, so this is the presentation, report to the city commission. We have a full staff right now, or a full board, I should say, various backgrounds and things of that nature. Our 2014 meetings, we had total meetings scheduled was twelve, number of meetings canceled was two, that's just because of lack of agenda items. Number of unexcused absences was zero. The board has a very good, people are very diligent in their responsibilities to attend the meetings, which makes things a lot easier for us to conduct our business. Purpose and goals, we're just, I'll just re- verbatim, per Michigan zoning enabling act of 2006, public act 110 of 2006, section 125, dad, period 3601, zoning ordinance shall create a zoning board of appeals, hence we exist. Section 80.64, city of Marquette zoning ordinances establishes BZA. Some of our responsibilities are official interpretations of zoning ordinance text and map, appeals from administrative orders, requirements, decisions, and determinations, and variances from zoning ordinance standards. In addition, designate Class A non-conforming uses or structures. Accomplishments for 2014, we just, are just the cases that come up, we don't really have much say-so, if they arrive, we make a decision on them. So, moving on. Goals for upcoming year, I think this is very important, educational opportunity for board members, webinars, training, and the review of the bylaws, which allows us to only be a more effective board when it comes to deciding cases. Issues and discussions are further, allow present board members to provide a recommendation on prospective applicants, recommended the development of a plan for efforts to support public awareness and education of zoning sign and fence ordinances and enforcement policies. The BZA has heard enough cases regarding ADA ramp placement in front yards to warrant a review of the current standards. Currently stairs, porches, et cetera, are allowed encroachments in the zoning ordinance, but there is no mention of ADA ramps. So, I know it was brief, it was quick, so other than that, does anybody have any questions?
Oh, Jason, thank you for your brevity and your (laugh)...
You're welcome.
And I must compliment your committee on the minutes, they're very informative.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions you have, or Jason? Commissioner Campana, excuse me, Kim Benzey?
I guess one question I have, particularly with the, I guess, the ADA ramps and that, when I was on the Planning Commission, we were studying the current zoning code and found that about seventy-five percent of houses are non-conforming to our current ordinance. So I guess one question I have is, you know, if you review parts of that, I guess what comes first in terms of working with the Planning Commission, waiting for the code to get updated? I guess how are you working with them to recommend?
That's where we're a little stuck. We made a recommendation, I think what was alluded to was more of an administrative procedure review than coming before the board, I think is what they were after. I don't remember specifically who said it, but I believe that was one of the ideas, that instead of having to go through the whole process, because there is the temp issue too, you can place a temp ramp up too, so there was some talk of that, so I was like, okay, so it's primarily not having to go before the BZA in of itself.
Any, Commissioner Campana?
Justin, because we have a subcommittee right now looking at membership retention for the different committees, and we're looking at how do we get these people to stay on or come back or join? I noticed you mentioned something about you want your board to recommend members.
Yes, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
That's about all I can really tell you.
Explain a little bit, so...
I think what it is, is maybe we could do some recruiting, where we could get some people on there that we know, because for a while we had a problem where we didn't have, we were very low on numbers, we were having alternates fill in, the board was not fully staffed like it is now. So that's what, but now I don't know if that's such an issue, but that's why I think that that's what we're kind of trying to be after. More active recruitment, maybe, by the board members ourselves, which I think is a great idea in some cases, because it does require a high degree of technical understanding to interpret certain maps and blueprints and drawings and put it back into verbal and make a presentation to the public at the same time.
Actually, it's a very good idea. We're trying, that's what we're trying to encourage all the committees to do, is to actually get their own members, because they know best what they need, so yeah, good, we hope you do it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connolly? Could you, I thought you raised your hand, excuse me. Anyone else? Well, Jason, thank you very much, and keep up a good job, and start recruiting right now for future members, okay?
All right, well, thank you. Thank you.
It's a good committee, really is.
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone have a good night.
Thank you. I apologize, I went out of order here for the appointments, I was, I think I was trying to think of allowing Jason to not have to wait, so my apologies. Item number three would be appointments. Is there a motion regarding appointments? Commissioner Connolly?
I move that we approve the appointment of Ken Davenport to the Harbor Advisory Committee, Michael Marsden to the Harbor Advisory Committee, and Brett Schwenke to the Marquette, as a Marquette City representative on the Marquette Area Waste Water Treatment Advisory Board.
Is there support for that? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Connolly?
No, thank the, would like to thank these people for volunteering to step up and serve our community.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Nothing other than hack was getting pretty low on members, so I'm glad that a couple people stepped up to join.
Yeah, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Opposed? No? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is public comment. The comments are not to exceed three minutes. When you wish to speak, please state your name, address, and city or municipal, or governmental entity where you live. If you wish to reserve time on any agenda item, please, just you're free to just say your name and which item you wish to speak on, and you'll be allowed to do that before the agenda item is taken up. So, anyone wishing to come forward and speak, or if you're just here for answering questions, just identify yourself to that.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Pello, 800 County Road PVP, Tilden Township, and we're here to address any questions you have under your new business item number seven, and this is Stu Bradley.
Formerly of Marquette City, now live in Ely Township at the end of County Road 581, also to support the Senate resolution.
And available for questions if there are any.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on items five, seven, and nine. These are my opinions. January 26th, you listed Father Marquette Park and the Presque Isle smoking ban as presentations with no public comment. We're entitled to comment when you're applying for a grant which involves public funds or telling people they can't conduct illegal activity in their own park. Kim Benzey's claim that the proper channels weren't followed is an understatement. As for Father Marquette Park, your packet included no supplement or drawing, yet at the meeting, specific plans were presented that we deserved to comment on from their inception. Instead, you wait until such items become done deals, by then it's too late for our comments to matter. No wonder so few people participate in this process. The Father Marquette plan is great, so long as the vegetation below the outcrop isn't disturbed. A better option might be to place the stairs and viewing platform farther south, near the northeast corner of the building. Phase two is not a number one priority, as Erby suggested. So long as the site is secure, more important priorities are North Lake Shore Boulevard, the old Coast Guard property, and scaling down the boathouse. Baldini was afraid of not meeting an April 1st deadline. We had plenty of time to follow proper channels and to give our citizens, other than Erby, their due chance to comment. Why did you not list those two items under business? January 26th, Kim Benzey mentioned receiving only the Niiger emails pertaining to herself, Vita, and Angeli. A string of emails was missing, she said, supposedly on account of legal implications. The reason Niiger paid over $1,200 for the emails was to receive many that you allegedly withheld to protect your hides, which only heightens public suspicion of you. Last week, our Visitors Bureau stated, "Marquette is a really special place, a four-season destination, where people can get away but yet feel at home." Gear Patrol listed Marquette as one of the world's 25 best places to travel, based on interesting people, businesses, events, and recreation opportunities. Quote, "The adventure capital of the north, Marquette has everything, either within city limits or close striking distance, world-class skiing, mountain biking, hiking, and paddling the largest freshwater lake in the world." What do those activities share in common? They're largely dependent upon our community lakeshore and the Hartwood tract, the very attributes that you seek to compromise. Nature plays a huge role in why we're receiving all this praise. Our forefathers saw the value in preserving our treasures before human greed took over, threatening the way of life that's earned us international recognition. Such revelations get to the crux of why I work to preserve our unique quality of life, so the children of tomorrow may enjoy what we enjoy today.
Mr. Verito? Mr. Verito? Mr. Verito, did you want to speak on five, seven, and nine?
Yes, those are the three.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, here in Malankey and 8 Marquette Drive. I want to compliment the city of Marquette on the street cleaning that we had the previous snowstorm here in the past week, ten days. They've done an incredible job, not like some of the coastlines that we've had in a country where they're not able to maneuver at all, we're able to move without any hesitation at all in our community. So I thank you for having such a fabulous public work system. Also, I want to welcome the DocSled people that are coming next weekend to visit our community. It looks like you're going to have plenty of snow and a lot of fun, and I've run into a lot of people that are looking forward to having just an incredible amount of activities in our town, and all the restaurants and hotels and motels are going to be just busting from their side. So, again, thank you for all the good things you guys do.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Sorry, I, Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield, here in Marquette. Grab my jacket, I have a phone call and I have to, I have to run after these comments. And that brings me to why boards have such a hard time filling positions. A lot of us don't have time. We have lives that we all have to adhere to, things that have to be done, can't necessarily schedule it out if you're the only one doing the work. So for me, what brings me today is I got a parking ticket for, no offense to the last speaker, but I don't like our public works. I don't like how our snow is removed. The main roads, those do get a lot of work. Personally, I shovel three times a day. I have snow coming into my driveway from the main road, I'm the first drop-off, so all of the snow from my hundred feet, that I can push all my snow down to, comes right back into my driveway. So in order to pull into my driveway tonight, I have to go and shovel some snow. That was part of the phone call, that was part of the issues, I got a timeline. So, with that in mind, I, I come to realize that we are about to spend $12 million on a new municipal center, but nobody's spoken about different kinds of works that that center is about to do or provide for us. So I understand nothing comes free, and I understand nothing is just given to city residents. A few years back, we privatized garbage collection. We opened it up to a individual private company. I thought that was great, and this is awesome, we should do it. But we as a city are operating as a middleman to pay for those services. Personally, I put out one week of trash a month, and yet I pay the same amount as my neighbor, or as all of you. So by me reducing my waste, I have not seen a financial recipient for it. So for me, I do not see as many services that the city provides, even though I'm paying for these services. So my suggestion is, we make national news every year about how much snow we have in this town. That's typical, this is what we do. For lifelong residents, this is what we do, right? You might have a snow thrower, you might have a friend down the street who has a plow, something to that effect. The amount of money that I spend on garbage removal that I don't use is the amount of money I can spend for a teenage kid down the street to clear my snow. Teenage kid down the street doesn't clear my snow all the time. My suggestion is somehow figure out for city services, the individual to take care of trash and contract for that trash removal, and for the city to take over removing snow that you have pushed into my driveway. Mind you, the driveway is maybe three feet from where the snow plow pushes the snow. My time is up, and it's unfortunate, because there's a lot to be said. I'll leave you at this. Please rearrange the seating arrangements, so the younger generation and the women are not on the outsides, quote, marginalized. We have the appearance of marginalizing our youth and our talent in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public comment section. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda and items number four, B, and C? Commissioner Connolly?
I move that we, that the commission adopt the consent agenda, including items four, B, and C.
Okay, is there support to that?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those, I'm sorry.
Did he say approving the whole consent?
No, B and C.
Just B and C.
Yeah, and then we're, okay. Any discussion further? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Say opposed, no, that motion passes. Now, consent agendas, item A and D with allowing Commissioner Campana to abstain from A, and Commissioner Frazier abstaining from Commissioner, from item 4D. Commissioner Connolly?
Should these be moved separately?
Yeah.
I move that the commission adopt consent agenda, item 4A.
Allowing Commissioner?
Allowing Commissioner Campana to abstain.
Okay. Is there support for that?
Your Honor, there's the one point, Commissioner Campana should vote on 4A with the exception of his bill. Has that been removed? Because he has to vote on A, except for his reimbursement check.
Okay.
May, may I reiterate the motion?
Yes, yes.
I move that we adopt consent agenda, item 4A, with the exception of the payment to Commissioner Campana.
Is there support to that? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you for the clarification. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Say no, that motion passes. Next motion, Commissioner Connolly?
I move that we, that the commission adopt the congen- consent agenda for A, specifically the payment of Commissioner Campana's travel.
Is there support to that?
Support.
Okay, Commissioner Frazier, any discussion? All those in favor say, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Well, I'd just like to ask what this was for?
The, the travel expense, the $61.41, according to what I saw, was attending the secretary, or the State of the State address in Lansing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is this, I guess I would look at this as a personal invitation and not city business, so I will be voting no for that reason, if I could let the minutes show that.
Okay. Any further discussion, or Commissioner Campana?
I went on for State of the State with Johnny DePietro. I considered it an important trip in that we met with Representative Keevila and his staff, who I got to know better. Met with Representative Dianda, who I got to know better. We talked about the UP, we talked about what things are going on up here. In fact, at the last meeting, we discussed this. That evening, I also got to talk to Keith Cray, who is the head of the DNR, and him and his aide expressed interest in coming up for the Sled Dog 200 this, this weekend. Whether or not they show, I don't know, but, you know, they recognized me and John, and they were anxious to make that acquaintance. I also saw the gentleman who ran for representative against Beneshek a couple years ago, and I forget his name, but he is now heading up or in higher, administrator of some sort with the Veterans Administration. We talked for a long time about what's going on in his department and what he's going to be doing for the UP, so, and the Marquette area in specifically. So I thought that it was, in that respect, we got a lot out of it. They know that Marquette exists, and they know that we're interested in what they're doing, so I consider it a worthwhile trip. Thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners? I would make a comment. They invited me, and I had a conflict, so I asked the mayor Protem to go. They invited me because I was representing the city as the mayor, and I viewed it as a very worthwhile effort to network with state government. I know one of the people in the audience was there, also networking and very proudly representing the UP and the program that they worked hard on. And if you listen to the State of the Union, many times, the governor mentioned the UP by name and called it out, so I think this was a very, I can't imagine anything personal about this. I think it was a very good way to represent the city and the UP for the future. So I couldn't go, and I certainly would have gone if I had, and I appreciate Commissioner Campana going. Call for the motion then to be voted on. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion passes six to one, and one abstains, five to, five to one with one abstention and one no. Okay, the next motion regarding Commissioner Connolly?
I move that the commission adopt consent, consent agenda 4D, allowing the termination of the lease agreement with Pure Michigan Boat Cruises LLC.
Okay. Is there support to that? Commissioner Reynolds?
Support.
Okay. And Commissioner, Commissioner Frazier's going to abstain from, is that okay, Mr. Attorney, that he would just abstain?
It's my understanding that his family has a business relationship with this company, and I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Next, new business, excuse me.
Yeah, with one abstention, just for the record.
One abstention, yeah. The next is item number five, under new business, commission rules of procedure. Mr. Verito, you wish to address the commission on this?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. You're proposing to move boards and committees in the wrong direction, assumingly because you want... to move boards and committees in the wrong direction, assumingly because you want to let the honorees leave the meetings as early as possible. You've been asked previously to place boards and committees after citizen comment, so the public is given a due chance to comment on the appointees prior to their induction. Instead, you ignored the recommendation. So long as you're proposing changes to the agenda, this is the proper time to reinstate closing citizen comment, which you stole from us for no honest reason.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the agenda item?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background. At the January 26, 2015 commission meeting, the commission requested staff to update the commission rules of procedure to place the board and committee section to the beginning of the agenda. The attached updated version places the rules in outline, outline format, fiscal effect, none by this action, recommendation. Following the review of the updated city commission rules of procedure, adopt new rules of procedure, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Connolly?
I move that following the review of the updated city commission rules of procedure, that the commission adopt the new rules of procedure.
Is there support? Commissioner Campana? Have to be recognized. Commissioner Campana?
I second.
Okay. Commissioner Connolly, any discussion?
This is just an act of kindness to those people willing to serve the city on boards and committees so that they don't have to sit through a lot of city business for the recognition.
Commissioner Campana?
I would agree with Commissioner Connolly.
Any other comments? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Next item is item number six, commission priorities for the fiscal year 2015. Mr. Clerk, could you read the agenda item, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The city requires adoption of a two-year strategic plan. The first such plan was adopted for the period of fiscal years 2014 through 16. The fiscal year 2014 city commission priorities were memorialized for continuity purposes and provided to the fiscal year 2015 city commission. The annual priorities serve as a general direction to the city manager and provide the basis for managing administrative workload, resource management, and agenda setting. At the commission work session on January 5, 2015, the city commission reviewed the fiscal year 2014 commission's priorities, wherein changes were identified. Attached, find work session materials from January 5, 2015 and priority, priorities for 2015. Fiscal effect, none by this action, recommendation, endorse the fiscal year 2015 commission priorities, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Campana?
I move that we endorse the fiscal year 2015 commission priorities.
Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Campana?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Nothing further. We had a work session on this and added to, added and subtracted to our plan for the fiscal year, and I think that it was developed well.
Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Well, I will vote for this. I think there are a lot of important things in there, but I, I would like my comments to reflect that a strategic plan has measurable goals and objectives, so that year by year, they can be measured. We can go back and see if we've met them. To me, this, these are just priorities. It's not a strategic plan. So my hope is that in the coming year, that we have a plan where we can measure what we are prioritizing. Again, I will vote for it, but I'd like my comments to reflect that.
Any other comments? Commissioner Connolly?
I have a brief request to the city manager. It is not a substantive change. I think a lot of citizens who would look at this on the website would not understand the term AMI. And if we could spell that out, it's an automatic metering initiative or something like that. I would just like to spell it so people can look at it and say, oh, that's what it is, rather than imagining what it was.
Thank you. I have a question also of the city manager, even though he's not feeling well. We're not trying to pick on you. Do we not have a strategic plan or does, a plan?
Yes, sir. We have a strategic plan that was adopted in 2014 per the city charter. It's a two-year plan.
Right.
And the next time it'll be updated, it'll be 2016.
And that is different than the strategic priorities.
Correct. The strategic priorities were one of the stepping stones to develop, developing the strategic plan, and they really served to memorialize a one-year view of what the city commission's priorities might be.
Thank you. My comment would be, the purpose, the other purpose for this was, we have three new commissioners. And if you're a new commissioner and you sit here for six months and you have no idea where everybody's going, it's critical, we thought that we would want to have strategic priorities identified and agreed upon early on in their terms, so we could be working on priorities that we want to accomplish, not a measure of how to quantify them and whether we're successful or not, with just giving an idea, where are we working? And the other is, for individuals who are in the public, who want to run for commission, they can look at these and say, these are the things that are working. I'd like to work on X, Y, and Z in addition to these, and then get interested in what we're working on. So I would encourage people to look online and see what these are. And we worked hard to get these together, so we would know what our plan, our priorities were this year. So I think it's been very helpful. I'll call the question. All those in favor say, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next is item number seven. And again, Mr. Verito, you wish to speak on item number seven, I believe. Correct?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Isn't the, the document read first before we speak? You're moving ahead with this resolution when a public majority, which you're not even aware of, opposes County Road 595. You're oblivious to the public sentiment because on August 28, 2012, the elected officials were allowed to speak first and leave. Few, if any, stuck around to hear how the clear majority of their constituents felt. As your resolution suggests, you believe that wetlands are yours to destroy. Listen to this gibberish. Quote, "A good faith argument suggests that the EPA's action was arbitrary, capricious, and not based on the law or the facts presented to the agency," end quote. The MDEQ's alleged malfeasance was what wasn't based on law or presented facts. And here, you're legitimizing the DEQ to the detriment of our environment. The EPA's action was not arbitrary, but based on solid facts and testimony delivered by the public majority long after the bureaucrats left. Any doubters need only review the record. The facts presented by the opposition are overwhelming. You simply don't care to hear them, and you need to hear them before passing a blind resolution. You're opposing a conclusion reached by an objective outside agency who heard all the testimony, reviewed those facts, and decided arbitrarily, without the influence of the big money interests, which the DEQ allegedly gave into before our eyes and ears. Under your purposes for the road, recreational use is mentioned last. The resolution threatens recreational use as County Road 595 would bisect the largest remaining roadless area in the Midwest. But do you care? No. Even though this board supported the mine, knowing full well what haul routes were proposed. You put faith in your hurdle-by-hurdle process, believing you'd get the road later, much like you handled Lake Shore Site and Founder's Landing. Or perhaps you acted too foolishly to look ahead during the application process to foresee this dilemma. Your third whereas was known years ahead of time, that, quote, "mixing commercial traffic with personal traffic in high congestion areas is detrimental to the safety of residents." We warned members of this years ago, but where were they then? The answer is bent on supporting a filthy mine and worrying about the rest later. Your fourth whereas reads, "County Road 595 will improve public safety, protect our environment, and boost economic development." It spoils our environment for exploitation, exploitation that most of us disfavor in the northwest reaches of our county. If safety concerned you, you'd have opposed the mine, well knowing the planned haul routes. Your fifth whereas falsely boasts bipartisan support from the public and conservationists. The record shows that the public majority and non-bureaucratic conservationists disapprove of the road. Your resolution reeks of ignorance and outright deceit.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read the agenda item?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background. At their meeting of January 19, 2015, the Marquette County Road Commission passed a resolution to appeal the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's refusal to remove its objections to the construction of County Road 595 if the appeal was processed without using any public funds. Elected leaders in both chambers of the state legislature support this effort and have reached out to communities within the central upper peninsula, seeking endorsement of Senate Resolution Number Nine. It is recommended that the Marquette City Commission approve the attached resolution to demonstrate support for the Marquette County Road Commission's appeal of the U.S. EPA's objection to the planned construction of County Road 595. Fiscal effect, none by this action, recommendation, consider the resolution supporting Senate Resolution Number Nine, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion anyone wishes to make? Commissioner Campana?
I make the motion to support Senate Resolution Number Nine and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Is there support to that? Commissioner Connolly?
Support.
Commissioner Campana?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any comments?
Please. I'm very much for this road, 595. The road's already there, just needs to be upgraded to a usable road. If nothing else, we do it for the safety, safety of the people that live on that road, for the students that walk on that road from northern, the safety of people from Big Bay through Marquette, through the township, through Dogonin, through Ishbim. The mine is there, it's working, the trucks are rolling. We have to protect the people. If you have this 595, that's going to take away a whole lot of problems. Not to mention that there'll be other trucks using it. There'll be logging trucks, gravel trucks, other kinds of trucks like that. I talk to people, as many as I can, I get their opinions, and I have not heard one person, not one person, who's against this road. And I try to talk to a variety of people. The road makes sense. There is just no reason not to have this road. So I'm all for it. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Commissioner Connolly?
There's always to look at, at environment, and we have to look at the environment within our city. Is one of the things that we consider, and I think that County Road 595 would improve our environment.
Other people want to comment. Commissioner Camp- Campancy?
Well, I guess I'm going to take a little different spin on this, and that is that I believe the city did write a letter to the EPA, rather extensive one, voicing similar concerns to the resolution we have before us. I'm not sure if we got a response or if the response said something like, thank you for your time, however, we've made our decision. When I stepped on board to the city commission, we also wrote a letter and hired legal counsel outside of our city attorney to draft the letter to the DEQ. And that letter came back saying that Lundin and Rio Tinto, because it was during the transfer, were not in violation of any of the permitting. There's been a, a transportation subcommittee group from the city commission meeting with regional partners, other government leaders, logging interest, mining interest. And I guess we're at a point where I think we want a regional solution. I think we want a regional study. And Lundin has been nice enough to help us get to where we are now. We've explored some routes. Those are public. We haven't moved forward, and there is no more funding to move forward with any regional studies. So my question is, it's not to say that a lawsuit against the EPA is wrong, but I don't think it's the first option we have. And I'd like to see us continue to work together with our neighbors, with the industry around us, to come up with a regional study. I don't know if 595 is the best route. I don't think we've fully explored all of the options, even though it is clear that basically a road does exist on this route. But I can tell you, growing up and working in a business, enforcing someone who is in development, that coming at them with a lawsuit probably won't help any of us in the end. I think we're far better off to do our research and gather data and come back and say, this is our regional report. And from there, if a lawsuit is where we go, that's where we go. I feel like right now, I would rather keep working regionally as a group and present our facts. I'm not comfortable with the lack of details coming out around this. We have been working with Senator Casperson and Representative Kivala, and we've always been told that once we all come together, they'll support what we want and move it forward and help find us funding if it's available. And now, all of a sudden, they're coming and wanting all of us to get together for a lawsuit. And I guess I can't just jump on board. I think there's a lot more discussion that needs to happen before municipalities sign on. Maybe all of them will sign on. Maybe the city will sign on tonight. I'd like to see us go down a route that has a little more conversation. I know some people feel like it's been exhausted with the EPA. I think there's still work that we can be, that can be done regionally, and I'd like to see us go there before we just jump on board with the lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Baldini?
I have a question, probably for our attorney, that a 401, a 501(c)(4) is being set up. And my question is, will donations to that committee, will they be made public or will they be held in private?
You want the answer?
Yes.
Yeah, 501(c)(3), or excuse me, 501(c)(4) does not require that donations be made public.
Thank you. Any other comments in follow-up to your question?
I, well, I, the city of Marquette has taken a stand on this issue before in previous commissions, reporting it. And I, and I agree that there's a safety issue, and I think the number of trucks that are going through the city and through the township and on US 41 is, is a disaster waiting to happen. And I support the construction of the road, but I believe the wetlands mitigation could have been solved if negotiations had continued. Because if I recall, DEQ very quickly dropped it at Christmas time, and they didn't pursue it. And I've, I've had some experience with EPA and different venues, and they are not always the easiest to work with, but you've got to keep at it, and there's a way to mitigate wetlands. I'm concerned about who's going to pay for this. The Road Commission has affirmed by resolution that it will only proceed with this appeal if no public funds are expended on this appeal. And we're being asked to support a resolution this evening that we're not sure who's going to pay for the legal effort. We're a public body. We're representing the citizens of the city, and when we speak as representatives for the residents, I believe we have a responsibility to determine who is actually paying for something. You know, the old adage of follow the money is, is appropriate in this matter also. I've read in the paper that we now have a, a foundation being set, the 501(c)(4), and I suppose I would want to know if the contributions would be made public or not for this lawsuit. And I know that politics makes strange bedfellows, but I believe as a public body, we should know who's occupying the other bed. I believe that we should also ask the state of Michigan to contribute part of the projected 90 to 95 million dollars that they anticipate collecting as a severance tax to help pay for this. If it's a safety thing, which we all admit, even the state does, then I think they should kick some money in. The construction of this road is supported for safety, saving miles traveled. And I think therefore, the state should be willing to put aside a little bit of that money. I also believe that we should publicly ask the DEQ to participate with us in this lawsuit. They were a party to the negotiations. They dropped it very quickly. And I assume they're still being supportive of the construction of this road. And if they aren't, they'll either be asked that publicly in a deposition, and then we're in a very difficult situation if they aren't. I support the purpose of the road, but I can't support this res- I support the purpose of the road, but I can't support this resolution without knowing who's going to pay for the expenses of this lawsuit. This is not an issue of Tom Baldini wanting to know, but this is an issue of Tom Baldini, a commissioner for the city of Marquette, representing the people of Marquette, and I think as a public policy question, we have an obligation to know who's going to pay the bill. You know, to paraphrase an old saying, "He who pays the bills makes the rules," and I think we have that obligation. I support the intent of the resolution, but without knowing who's going to pay for it, I, I will vote no until I have some assurances that that will be made public.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds.
Well, my comments agree with all three commissioners. My biggest concern is the financial obligation, I don't know what we would be put under, but also, Commissioner Campagni, I think now that we have a new commission, I think that a new Transportation Subcommittee could be formed, and I think that we could deal with this in more of a relaxed fashion than going forward and automatically going after them. But I do agree with also Commissioner Campana that we do need to have some kind of resolution, we have to do something, and I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with voting yes on this, if I don't know financially what we would be getting into, or where the money is coming from, as Commissioner Baldini said, so I will be voting no.
Okay. Any other commissioners who haven't spoken yet? Commissioner Frazier?
Do they require an answer right away, or is there room, like, I guess a lot of the commissioners have more questions, and there's obviously people here that can answer some of those questions, I guess that are a little...
Well, let me ask them. Deb, could you come to the podium there? What timeframe are you looking at?
Well, our 501(c)(4) will be up and running hopefully by the end of this week.
Okay.
There'll be a website, and anybody that goes to that website will get some facts and figures on, on the lawsuit itself or the appeal process, and we'll also be able to push, click a button and donate to the cause if you wish to. 501(c)(4)'s are, you're able to be anonymous if you want to, or your name can be out there. The three people that are involved in this are myself and Stu Bradley and Tony Rotaski, and we're all three going to donate, just so, there's three names for you right there. The sooner we get the, the resolutions and the support out there, the better off we'll be. You know, we'll keep you posted on how much money we're collecting, but as far as, you know, if, if someone wants to remain anonymous, it's just like any other 501(c)(4) or (c)(3), you know, Save the Wild U.P. is one, they don't have to divulge their people if they don't want to be, we won't have to divulge theirs if they choose to be anonymous. And we have to respect that, because that is their wish. The only thing different, I think, that in reading about 501(c)(4)'s and (c)(3)'s, is (c)(3)'s are tax deductible for the donor, and (c)(4)'s are not, is what I got out of it. So, we're here, we're willing to do this, I've been involved in this from day one, as I think you all know, you know, with my, with my role as a city, or county commissioner for years. As far as the timeframe, it ran out, the time ran out. They kept changing the, the criteria, they kept making the criteria more and more, and finally the time ran out. The last request they got for more information and, and more stuff to be done was just before the holidays, and the time on the, on the permit process ran out January 3rd. So that's what happened then.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, anything else I can help with, let me know.
Okay. In answer to your question, Commissioner Frazier, you know, we're, the, the state legislators made a resolution, and that's basically what we're supporting, there's no, like, time limit, or, maybe we can do it now, or a month from now, but, you know, I think it's important to, if, if it is supported, that that's a, a statement of support to this fundraising ability. Any other questions? I, I have a couple comments. I've been involved in the road negotiations for two and a half years, and it has been very, very frustrating, to say the least. And I, I think, and I don't know, but I, I can't speak for other townships that are very seriously affected as much as the cities, that they might not also be supporting this resolution. I think they are. And we were getting nowhere, and I think the agreement of everyone was, well, since all the townships in the city can't get together and get an agreement, that we would have the state legislators do this, and this is the action they took to say, "Okay, we'll step forward and make this resolution supporting it," in hopes that it will avoid all the interniche conflict. And making a point, I, I would vote against this if this were the city suing the EPA, but it isn't the city suing, it is, it's the County Road Commission. So, all the comments about, "Well, we should do this and we should do that," we're not suing them, they are. They're, that, but I don't think I would vote for this if we were doing it, because I would be equally uncomfortable with the anonymity element. But we're not doing it, the, the Road Commission is. I think, two other points, there is no money available, either the state or whatever, for, for mining, for a comprehensive study. That was kind of beat to death in two and a half years of trying to negotiate it, and it didn't happen. And now, the mine is up and running, and there's no leverage to make them do that. I would make one other point, this is not, we're not dealing with just one mining company. Last I checked, six months ago, there were 35 mining applications in the area of Big Bay and Berga County. Guess what? Why? Because there's iron, there's ore there that they are probably going to start mining eventually. So this road, I think, even is more critical. And I'm going to vote for it, even though I don't like the anonymity a part, but the, the interesting thing is the people who are against the mines are doing the same exact thing, they're, they have the same anonymous donors, so I don't think that's particularly an issue. So I'm going to vote for it. So any other comments? We've all had our, say, second go-around now. Commissioner Baldini?
Well, I, if there's 35 mines living there, we're all kicking some money to do a road study, but the state of Michigan, as I've seen the projections, they're going to make between $90 and $95 million in taxes. I think our legislators should ask for a little bit of that to help in this. Save the Wild U.P. is different than the city of Marquette. Save the Wild U.P. is a group of people that came together for a purpose, they oppose the mine. We are here to represent the people of Marquette with transparency, and I, I have a real philosophical difficulty not knowing who's putting the money in. Three people who've set up the committee, no offense, I doubt you're going to foot most of the bill for this, okay? This is probably going to go on for years. And, and I think Commissioner Campagni says we should look for some sort of settlement, or not a settlement, but some way to, to rectify and correct this problem, because it, it's going to be tied, it's going to be full employment for some attorneys. And, but I, I, I do believe that as a public body, we're a public body, not a private body, we, we owe it to our constituents that we should know who's footing the bill and who's paying for, for this. So, that's my position. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments the second time around? Mr. Campagni?
Only to say that I think the state royalties are about $200 million.
Right, or it's more. Yeah, I think there's more.
So there's plenty of money from the state, and I guess that's my frustration, when you look at the comprehensive traffic study the city just did, I believe M.D.O. just did one for the township, I think if we were to all put these together, and even work further outside of Marquette County with Berga County, if we can come back with a regional study and say, "Here is what we have, now go ahead and say, 'We can't do something.'" I think we need data, I think we need, I think we need to come together to say that, "Here's our region, we study it, we know it, we're standing united, we're not just going to throw a lawsuit at you." And I, I agree with what Commissioner Baldini is saying, I think it bothers a lot of people that there isn't more transparency with this, because people quickly jump to the conclusion that it's logging, it's mining, it's, it's certain special interests, and even though all of us have an interest in to make sure that the roads aren't driving through the center of the city, ruining the township roads, Marquette Township, I, I just don't think right now this is the direction we should head. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Campana?
I still feel, after listening to this, that the major question here is, "Do we or do we not support the road?" My major concern is, yes, we do, I support the road. That's the major question I feel we have to answer tonight. Funding we take care of later. It doesn't bother me that somebody else is footing the bill. I look at if all of our central representatives and senators from the Central U.P. are in favor of it, our states, our U.S. senators and our representative are in favor of it. If they're, if they're okay with it, I'm okay with it. I assume that this group came together so that there's a face to, you know, the money collection. I don't think they're dishonest people, I don't think they're hiding anything. Can I ask you a question, the big question, there's a, there's a big hunk of money out there that everybody's talking...
Would you come up?
If you believe what you read in the paper, there's a big hunk of money out there that everybody's concerned about. You're probably not going to disclose where it's coming from? Yes, no? No?
Right now, we don't have any money.
You don't have any money right now?
No. We have not started collecting any money until we're incorporated, which won't happen till, till the end of this week. Right now, we're working on our incorporation and our bylaws, and getting our tax ID number, and setting up that, and setting up our website, and that'll be done by the end of the week, and then we'll start collecting money.
And you will control all the contributions and disbursements?
Our treasury, Stu Bradley.
Okay. Well, I think you're a good group, I would tend to trust you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back, Debbie, to the microphone. I have another question to ask you. Is there a similar group forming to have donations for a traffic study? Because as far as I know, there is no money at all for a traffic study, period.
That I'm aware of.
Okay, are you aware of any group saying, "Let's do a traffic study, let's raise some money," either municipalities, private, or anything? None? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to call the question in, all, I'm going to have a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, because I have no idea how this is going to turn out, so would you mind calling the roll?
Not at all. Commissioner Baldini?
No.
Commissioner Campagni?
No.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
No.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coin?
Yes.
The motion would pass four to three, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for a vigorous debate, respecting one another's feelings and doing it friendly. Thank you. The next item is item number eight, and that's the Municipal Service Center for Public Works operation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read that?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The city of Marquette has used a two-step process to select a design-built team, DBT, for the design and construction of the new municipal service center. First step was open to all interested parties and solicited statements of qualifications only. Eight submittals were received, and the submittals were evaluated by a panel of city staff. The city project team, or CPT, shortlisted the design-built teams, DBTs, that were determined to be most qualified. The shortlisted DBTs were then invited to submit full proposals for providing design and construction services for the construction of a municipal service center. The city accepted proposals for the RFP until January 27th, 2015. Following the tech, following technical evaluation, the CPT conducted interviews with the prospective DBTs and scored them based on the statement of qualifications, technical evaluation of proposals, including conceptual design, proposed budget, and proposed timeline, and the DBT interviews. The, out of a maximum of 100 points, the individual scores are listed below, with Gunlock Champion Incorporated, with Fishbeck Thompson, Carr &amp; Huber Incorporated, was a high score at 90 points. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, approve the selection of the design-built team consisting of Gunlock Champion Incorporated and Fishbeck Thompson &amp; Carr &amp; Huber Incorporated from Iron Mountain and Grand Rapids respectively for the design and construction of the new municipal service center, and authorize staff and the city attorney to negotiate a detailed scope of services for consideration at a future commission meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion anyone wishes? Commissioner Conley?
I move that the city commission approve the selection of the design-built team consisting of Gunlock Champion Incorporated and Fishbeck Thompson, Carr &amp; Huber from Iron Mountain and Grand Rapids, Michigan respectively, for the design and construction of the new municipal service center, and authorize staff and the city attorney to negotiate a detailed scope of services for consideration of a, at a future commission meeting.
Sir, support. Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Conley, comments?
I think this is the next step that we need to follow as part of our agreement with Duke Life Point to move the hospital to the new site. It doesn't commit us to anything, there is no fiscal effect to this, but we need to take positive steps forward at this point so that this issue does not constrain the completion of a deal with Duke Life Point.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Nothing, I just look forward to the, see the work as it goes, and I think staff did a good job working, all these are all good companies, I think, and I think staff worked really hard on this, so glad to see they got something of a boost, and look forward to seeing plans and watch the project continue on, so good luck to staff.
Thank you. I would mention that there are two representatives from the companies that were on this motion selected, so if there are questions, you could certainly feel free to address them, if that would be all right. Any other comments? Commissioner Campagni?
No comments really about the company chosen, I think staff made the best decision they could. I do have a question concerning the actual cost, DLP is, is proposing to put into this, and from a January 9th email to the city commission, city commissioners, the state of Michigan asked for some clarification on the brownfield application we turned in, and do we have any renderings yet from Duke Life Point?
Who, who are you addressing that to?
Well, I guess the city manager, and he can, he can see who he wants to answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Clar, just clarification, Commissioner, the renderings on the hospital, renderings on the service center?
Hospital.
No, we don't have any renderings on the hospital yet.
Okay, I will be voting against this, particularly because we have a 37-acre site that the service center sits on now, the service center building that's the most eastward, takes up only seven acres, and from what was published, at our open house, we have a $390 million investment by the hospital. Yet our MOU is $170 million, and I believe what is in the state brownfield application also says $170 million, or no, I'm sorry, it says $390. However, our MOU says differently. So I guess if I was looking at this as a personal investment, it's quite a bit of difference there, and I guess I wonder what the plans are. Is DLP going to do a $390 million investment with big buildings that need the entire site, or do we actually need to move our service center? And that hasn't been able to be answered by me. So unfortunately, this agenda item really has to do with awarding a contract. I think that I want more clarification from Duke Life Point, and I'd like to see their drawings before I vote on anything with the hospital going forward. So if I could just have the minutes reflect that, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone? Commissioner Reynolds?
My question is, I guess to Bill, and if you want to forward it on, in our agenda supplement, it talks about conceptual design and drawings, and we did discuss in the future that public would be made aware of anything that's going on, and we did do that as far as site selection, but we did not do that thus far as far as design work. So, once something is presented to the commission and to the public as far as design, will that be something that the public will still have the opportunity to comment on? Will we have a public meeting to that effect, design-wise?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, ma'am. The short answer is yes, but let me...
The short answer is yes, but let me ask Superintendent Goodman to lead us through what happens next, should this be accepted.
Yeah. With the recommendation tonight moving forward, we'll definitely incorporate a couple of public forums that will give the public input. We'll do some 3D renderings. We'll, you know, seek input. Again, there's a lot of preliminary work that we still need to be done before we get to that point. But at certain critical junctures of the process of completing a schematic, public will have an opportunity for input.
One last question for you, Kurt, just because you deal with this more often. How is everybody scored out of a maximum of 100 points? And that's based upon? Could you just give me like a couple ideas of what they're scored on?
They're based on the RFQ was 20 points. The, let's see, technical evaluation of the proposals, proposed budget, proposed timeline, and the design team's interviews. So there's five categories worth 20 points each. And there's five members of city staff, part of the city project team, that did the evaluation.
That is all. I have no problem voting for this necessarily. I just wanted to make sure that they still had the input, and I haven't seen designs for it. And we haven't had a lot of discussion about the particular center, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Frazier?
It would hurt to have one of the reps from either Gunlock or the other company up here just to give a quick cliff notes together. Obviously, you guys have done this many times, so you can give a quick cliff notes version of how the process works after, if we accept it, you know, going here forward.
Would one of you be willing to come up and make a statement?
Might answer some more questions?
Thank you. I'm Jim Ebley with the president of Gunlock Champion. This particular project is a design-built proposal. So as part of the presentation on the RFP, we had to give of what we thought the building would look like and what it would cost today. Keep in mind, we have not talked to the owner about any wants or needs. To a certain point, they gave us some criteria to design this as best we could today and price it up. So the whole process of us going through and designing is going to take, well, three to four, at least four months to do the design before we move forward with any decisions on, you know, building, put a shovel in the ground. So that's kind of the way it goes. We are very involved in the design process with the owner, with the team, with Kurt and his team. And like I say, that process takes four to five months to do. And we'll be very transparent throughout the whole process. We'll have, we'll go through many, many meetings with Kurt and his team and the presentations as they move forward.
Just a clarification. You're saying with the owner, the city's the owner?
Correct.
That owner, okay.
Yep, definitely.
Has nothing to do with Duke Life Point? Okay. Okay? Any other comments? Mr. Baldini?
Just as a point of clarification, because we have made a commitment to the public that they would, we would keep them advised, up to date, and in effect, participate in the process. So you're accustomed to having public meetings?
Yes, we're a public-
Not just the owner, but-
Right. We will be, we'll be accompanying you at all the public meetings, going through our presentations on design, schematic design, design development, construction documents. So we'll be, our team will be very involved with the owner and Kurt's team during the whole process.
Okay.
At the public forums.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the question then. The motion is presented by Commissioner Conley. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes six to one. Okay? The next item is the Municipal Service Center Site Property Acquisition. And Mr. Verito, I, you're right. I apologize. I want them to read the motion first, the recommendation first. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Construction of the new Duke Life Point Hospital will require the, require construction of a new municipal service center, MSC, within the city in order to move forward with the relocation of the MSC. A process has been initiated to identify public works, departmental operational resource needs, and furthermore, the criteria to be used to effectively evaluate potential new sites for the facility. In the course of identifying potential locations, roughly 20 sites were initially considered. Each location was reviewed for access, existing site conditions, operational impact, ownership, size, surrounding use, utilities, and zoning. In order to accommodate the municipal service center's basic needs, sites were roughly 12 to, with roughly 12 to 17 acres of usable land were considered. The city project team, CPT, eliminated all but five of the potential locations due to various reasons and shortlisted these properties for further consideration. The sites were then presented to the public, staff, and city commission for input and after evaluation, after, and further evaluation by the CPT. Given the feedback received and preliminary evaluation, staff recommends the Wright Street property adjacent to Northern Michigan University Service Center be moved forward for negotiations with property owners. The recommended 11.2-acre site spans three parcels in the city and is owned partially by NMU, the federal government, and the city of Marquette. More detailed specifications on the property, as well as location map, are attached. Fiscal effect none by this action. The total project cost for the new municipal service center is anticipated to be $15 to $18 million. Recommendation: Authorize city staff to begin negotiations with the property owners of parcels 0510-880. That'd be 130 Wright Street, 0510-881, 1100 Wright Street, and 0511-510-1820, Lincoln Avenue. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verito?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. January 26, Ms. Kimpenzi stated that the hospital project was downsized by $60 million. Under her logical impression that the new hospital would then require less space, she wondered if they still required our service center site. No answer was given, yet you're moving ahead full bore with a design team and property acquisition, having not publicly addressed whether a new site for the service center is still needed. The appearance of this item on the agenda suggests that it is, but Ms. Kimpenzi wasn't able to reply to my five requests for information over the course of 13 days, maybe because the information isn't available. If it is decided that the new hospital still requires the service center space, find a way to make the armory site work, or fewer trees would be destroyed. The site adjacent to the NMU service center would necessitate the destruction of a woodland. Even worse, maintenance vehicles would need to contend with logging and mining traffic by having to cross an already busy and dangerous Wright Street to access the vast majority of our city. Please consider public safety and cost efficiency when making this important decision to preferably use the armory site, that is, if the site provides enough space.
Commissioners, is there a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that the city commission authorize city staff to begin negotiations with the property owners of parcels 0510-880. That is 1030 Wright Street, 0510-881, 1100 Wright Street, and 0511510-1820, Lincoln Avenue.
Is there a support to that? Commissioner Campana?
Give a second there.
Commissioner Conley, comments?
As before, this is another step that we need to take in order to fulfill the agreement that we made with Duke Life Point and to remove any constraints on that project moving forward.
Commissioner Campana?
A couple of questions, a couple of comments. I believe at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that plans, potential plans for the hospital are going to sit right on top of where the service center is now, so that the service center has to go. I thought that's what we talked about. As far as more traffic on Wright Street, all the more reason to have 595. It's congested now, but that's another reason. Just let's move the haul trucks off of that road. There's a parking lot across the street that I'm sure the city's planning on taking. It's a parking lot for Northern, and it's a very large parking lot, and kids are crossing that. There's no crosswalk. They just cross the street. So if they can get rid of that parking lot, I'm sure they want to put the parking lot somewhere else on their side of Wright Street. So that would contribute to a safety factor so that Northern students, so that no one gets banged up there. So I would be in favor of this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Welcome. Other commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Kimpenzi?
Again, I will be voting against this if we're talking about that the certain city commissioners know that a building will be put where the service center is. I guess I'd like to see those drawings or hear more about the knowledge of where exactly the building's going. I think we've heard everything from there's going to be one office complex to two office complexes to maybe one. And that's, that's where I think, again, we're ahead of ourselves. The state came back. This commission sat here and said, "We have to turn in the brownfield agreement. We have to turn it in." And they came back and basically said it was incomplete, that we were missing eight bullet-pointed things. So I don't buy into it. And again, my apologies to Gunlock Champion for sitting here. It has nothing to do with them. I feel like we need to have more serious conversations with Duke Life Point, and I feel like they're not happening. And so, again, I will vote against this because I think we have huge discrepancies in how much they're spending. And if they don't need to take down a 20-year-old service center building, I would like to negotiate that with them. They can still apply for the brownfield. They can still get their tax credits. But by moving the service center, this is a huge financial, long-term investment that the city is entering into, that I still have questions on who's going to pay for everything if we do have a not-to-exceed limit. And right now, our costs look like they're going to be well above that limit. So I have a lot of questions as we're moving forward with all this stuff that haven't been answered. And I think the public does, too. I know I'm not the only one sitting up here making the other six commissioners' life horrible by continuously bringing this up. But I really think that if we were entering into buying a house for ourselves, a car for ourselves, I think we'd be more diligent in the information that we need by making these decisions. So I guess for the same reason, if the clerk could please put why I'm voting against this as well. And again, my apologies to Gunlock Champion who are here. I just think that we need to do our due diligence, and we need to get more information from Duke Life Point, especially the renderings. Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Reynolds?
More is a question. I'm going to pick on you again, Kurt, just from my knowledge. In our recommendation, it has the, those addresses. Could you just, are those personal property owners? Are those NMU addresses? Could you just specify for me if you know?
One of the properties is the Northern Parking Lot. The other one is where the US Forest Service, currently the city owns that. And then the other property is owned by the state of Michigan, which is the Armory Building.
That was all I had.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Campana? No? Go ahead.
Question for Kurt. There's a statement there that's going to cost 15 to 18 million. Where would that money come from, Kurt? It is brownfield money. Not city money, specifically. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to point out, in the shopping analogy, that's exactly what we're doing. We're shopping. We haven't bought anything. We aren't buying anything yet. We're doing our due diligence by exploring the options. We have to be ready if and when the hospital plan comes through. And we can't just say, "All of a sudden, oh, you caught us off guard." Now, we need to look at the municipal service center, and that puts the whole process back. We need to keep moving on this. We agreed to it. This commission voted unanimously to go, move forward. I will sustain that decision.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Kimpenzi?
I'd just like to point out that Duke Life Point has already made changes to the MOU. In fact, I don't think, to my knowledge, that the city has come back when we turned in the brownfield agreement. So I, I think that the MOU is a starting point. It's not a legally binding contract. But my gosh, I think that when you see 390 million and 170, someone's got to ask the question, "What's changed?" That's what I'm asking.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, is that a correct statement that the memorandum of understanding that we agreed to has been changed without our knowledge?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the question. Oh, excuse me. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Say no.
No.
Okay. That concludes the agenda items. Now we get to commissioner comments. Commissioner Kimpenzi?
Can I ask to go last, please? Or I guess before the mayor, since I always go first?
Okay. Mr. Frazier?
No real comments. Sad to see the, I disdain for the Fair Michigan thing because I don't have any interest in it, but sad to see their go. They're trying to make a run at it in saying this. They may come back, but I think they had a good run. Hope to see them back sometime, but no comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
Real brief. Please do not forget that Lakeview Arena is in the running for prize money. If people, if you people go home and get on your computer, or the people at home, if they get on their computer and Google, where is it? Kraft? Kraft, Kraft, Kraft. Kraft Hockeyville, USA. And just add a few comments. The more comments, the more participation we get, we have a better chance of winning money, up to $20,000 and up, to help with Lakeview Arena. The UP 200 is coming this weekend. I'm sure everybody's aware of that. The weather should be good. We should have a good turnout. Hope everybody gets down there to see it. I would like, as I was driving here today, it was light out for the first time. I think winter is starting to wind down a little bit. We don't seem to have the, I was thinking about the problems we had last year. If the city manager could just very briefly, very briefly, because I know you're not feeling well, just comment about what kind of problems we've had so far as compared to last year.
Thank you, Your Honor. You're welcome. Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to thank the Marquette Fire Department for giving an impromptu tour of fire station number one. The staff was very helpful. I'm always impressed by what a good job they're doing and how intensively they have to train. There's so many different scenarios out there, and they're doing a great job keeping up and keeping us safe. And I want to thank them for the tour and thank them for what they're doing. Little reminder, tomorrow, the city commission is going to do some trash talking. We're going to talk about recycling at 5:15. If you have any comments about that whole process, come on down. It's going to be downstairs in room 103, I believe, talking about the recycling program.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldi- Excuse me. Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you. I would like to thank one of the speakers who suggested that we take the people on the end, if that counts, includes me, the young people who sit at the end and work at the center. I want to thank you for that. But the, also the Public Works Department. The streets are being widened, and that, it was needed, but the snow keeps coming, and they've done a great job. And I think, I noticed that the lake still has a lot of open water, and we still are coming with March and April, so it could be an interesting spring. But the dog sled races are here also. It was interesting that we did hear about the, once again, Marquette was recognized for its, for its many opportunities and what it has to offer to people, and its national recognition. And I think tonight, what we've done is we've taken some steps. We haven't finalized anything, far from it, but we've taken some steps to move, I think, the city even further along and into the next couple of decades.
Well, thank you for your youthful comments. Really appreciate them, really. It's kind of up to date and with it. Now, Sarah, young person, Sarah. Marginalized Sarah down at the end. Would you have any comments?
I don't feel marginalized.
You aren't.
First off, as it's been said, dog sled races this weekend. 7:30 Friday, they begin.
First off, as it's been said, dog sled races this weekend, 7:30 Friday, they begin. And typically, I don't do this, but there is a dear friend of mine that has, there's going to be a benefit next Monday, so I'm going to give a little thing about that. Next Monday, beginning at 4 o'clock until they stop serving food. The Stein House is going to be doing a benefit for Caitlin McGee. The Stein House is going to donate all of their, their services for the evening, and also all of the proceeds will be going to her. Caitlin is Tim McGee's daughter, if anybody was familiar with him in town for a while. And her stepmother is Lori McGee, which, who's also well-known in town. She had a lot of medical problems, and she has a lot of bills unpaid, and so the Stein House is serving the benefit dinner, and sales will go to her, and there'll be a silent auction, and for until there's no food. So, and that is all for the evening.
Thank you. This is the daughter of Chuch McGee, correct?
I know him as Timmy.
Hmm? Okay.
But sure.
I know him as Chuch, who is the road manager for the Rolling Stones, so she is a...
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Who, and she, he is, she is a wonderful lady, so thank you. Commissioner Campen, Campenzi?
Thank you. I guess two things, three things. I did go online and vote for Lakeview Arena, and I would encourage anyone who has been involved in hockey at all, or just knows of the woes of our never-ending money problems with supporting Lakeview Arena, to go in. Staff has come up with a grant for 150,000 if we are one of the most likable hockey towns. And I think that certainly by how much time everyone I know spends there, and certainly many in our community, this would help us a lot. I do apologize if there is a strategic plan, I guess if I could get that sent to me tomorrow, or if it's on the website, just alert me to that. And lastly, with the sled dog races coming up, I did notice that Commissioner Baldini was a mile marker sponsor, so he certainly does a lot with giving back to our community, and I'd just like to thank him for his contributions with that coming up this weekend. That's it.
Thank you. I have a couple remarks. In addition to the dog sled, the following weekend, the Rail Jam is on, which is, if you've not been to that, that's really something else, so I would suggest doing that. I have a grandson who's coming from Seattle to be in that. I did attend, along with a couple of the commissioners, the investiture of Dr. Fritz Erickson, the president of Northern Michigan University, this evening, or this afternoon. What a wonderful man. He's just a down-to-earth, regular guy, which is unusual for university presidents, they're usually stuffy, and, you know, this guy is just amazing. He actually showed a video of himself skiing and did a inverted 360 off a jump, which I think was fake, but he claimed that he did it. But that shows you that he's just kind of a regular person, and it was a very nice ceremony. The gear.com thing that was mentioned, which was, they selected the 25 best places in the world, or globally, for adventure, and towns in China, the Faroe Islands, southwest Montana, Sri Lanka, Bend, Oregon, Molokai, Washington, D.C., Malmo, Sweden, Tangier, Morocco, and Bogota, Colombia, and Marquette, Michigan. You think about that, that's pretty nice company. And in addition to, it's not just natural resources, it's the quality of the city. So I think that really speaks well, despite some of the rather overwhelming, repetitive, negative things we get said about us. That doesn't just happen by accident. The city like this is selected as one of the 25 best global places in the world to have adventure. This is a quality town. I think the university recognizes that, the students recognize it when they come here. And we do our very best serving the citizens to make this city what it is. And I really appreciate everyone who works on it to do it, rather than just the constant negatives. Mr. Manager, I know you're feeling ill, but you have any thing to say?
Thank you, Your Honor. Per Mayor Protem Campana, the comment on weather, or the challenges of the winter so far, certainly we've seen that along our coast. Lakeshore Boulevard has been taking a pounding. Lake Superior has higher water than normal, and we're also seeing the effects of prevailing gale pattern like we haven't had in about 40 years. So along our coastline, we're certainly seeing a lot more damage than we have in the past. We haven't hit the coldest part of winter yet, but I understand that this week, we're expecting another couple of Arctic blasts. There's an Alberta Clipper system moving in, and so we are potentially seeing record-breaking cold, as I understand it, this week. So I don't want to jinx it, but we're kind of at the, still at the beginning of what potentially could be a very severe winter. I wanted to offer too, with the UP 200 coming up, that people plan their week carefully. Please recall, certainly if you've been here, if you haven't seen it before, we close down our main street. We make it available for the competitors, and so getting around that day could be frustrating if you weren't expecting it. But also, it means that there's going to be an awful lot of visitors coming to town who are looking to see what this place called Marquette is all about, to have a good time and to recreate. And as in the past, I know the community has been very warm in their outreach, and I, I hope that, that they get the opportunity to do the same again, because there's going to be a lot of interesting people and a lot of interesting conversations can be had. I wanted to offer that tomorrow is the deadline for personal property tax exemption. I understand there are a lot of small businesses out there that still might like to apply for something like that, so I call your attention to it. Please be timely, tomorrow's your last day to get your paperwork in. And finally, community office hours this week, we're, we're going to try something new. They're going to be in press, in the Peter White Public Library Community Conference Room on the first floor, but they will be taped, if people consent to allow their, their time to be taped, so that we can give folks in the community a sense of what it's like and decide for themselves if something like, they might like to do in the future. We'll take that tape, and then we'll rebroadcast it on channel, on our public access channel for everybody to see.
By taped, you mean videotaped?
Videotaped.
Okay.
Yeah, we're actually trying to, to do a lot more videotaping segments of, of city business, so people get a sense to, or a chance to see in a sense of what it is that these sessions look like that they hear about from time to time. So we'll be airing that, and people who are participating, so long as they're aware of that and, and they consent to being videotaped, we'll look forward hopefully to sharing, sharing that more broadly in the future.
Well, that will either bring a lot of people or nobody. So one of the two, we'll see. Okay. And I hope you feel better, okay? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.